The monthly board meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance. I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Quinn makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Dearing, get your next one. Citizens' participation statements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have two requests. One individual has been notified that his commentary will take place in the July meeting. We had one request to speak on an item that was not on this month's agenda, but that has been shared with the board.
Written communications?
Any written communication has been distributed to the Board of Education.
Citizens' update, military update.
Good evening. So today is summer solstice, and I know that for most kids, once that school bells ring, it's actually the beginning of summer, but for us, this is the official beginning of summer. So Fort Leonard Wood has some great programs, and one of my favorites is our Bruce Clark Library Summer Reading Program. So anybody can participate in the Bruce Clark Library Summer Reading Program. It's all done online. You can go to BruceClark@, sorry, BruceClark.Beanstack.org/Reader365. There are several age groups, ages zero to four, five to 12, 13 to 17, and 18 years and up. And the library also provides some activities and crafts to keep the children engaged. This is a huge help with summer slip, getting their minds involved and their imagination, and the STEM kits that the library gives out are amazing and very challenging. I do them with my grandkids all the time, and obviously, they do so much better than I do at those than me. But please get your children involved, and that's absolutely free program. It's a wonderful program, and you don't have to even leave the comfort of your home. Also, Fourth of July this year will be bringing back the, Fort Leonard Wood will be bringing back the Fourth of July this year with all of the bells and whistles. We invite the community to join us with that. It is open to the public event. All the community will be welcome. We will have the interactive games, the petting zoo, the pony rides, all the food and beverage activities. We have an opening act of Thompson Squared and a country music act for our headliner of Parmally. And so we, of course, we have the salute to the Union, and there's no better place to celebrate our freedom than with those who serve every day to keep us free. We also, of course, have the area's largest fireworks event, so we invite everybody to come out and join us. It's a great way to celebrate summer and to get back in the swing of things, and pending any of your questions, that's all I have.
Sounds like a good time. Thank you.
Thank you.
District announcements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Megan, for that. That was outstanding. I want to take a moment to thank our students, staff, parents, and community for making the 2020-2021 school year possible. All but two of our schools were seated in the classroom every single day throughout this school year. Both the middle and high school temporarily went online during the year, but otherwise, all of our schools remained open, so we sure appreciate all the support and sure appreciate everything our staff and our students did to make that possible. In preparation for the upcoming school year, the district is seeking public comment on the pandemic opening guide and safe return to in-person instruction continuity of services plan. That's mouthful. The link is on the district's main webpage at www.wainsville.k12mo.us, on the district's Facebook page, and on the schools' Facebook pages. Waynesville R6 is one of five school districts in Missouri to be highlighted in Desi's District Continuous Improvement in Action publication for work with peer coaching and teacher efficacy. Enrollment is open for new families and kindergarteners. New families may go to our new student info tab on the district's main webpage for the link to the online enrollment page. Students who are returning to the district do not need to enroll. We do ask, however, that all families who are moving away let their buildings know. Summer school is being held through June 30th. All ninth graders and all new students entering grades 10, 11, and 12 should register for the August 13 freshman new student transition day at Waynesville High School. The registration link is on the high school website and the high school Facebook page. And I know, kids, you're just thrilled to hear this, but the first day of school for the 21-22 school years on Monday, August 23rd, 2021, don't worry, there's a few weeks off. So, that's all I have.
Be here before you know it.
It will be.
I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H.
I would make that motion.
Mr. Allen makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Quinn's second, all in favor, show hands. Six O motion carries. Student recognition, student athlete recognition, Mr. Ace.
Hello, we're gonna take the opportunity tonight to first recognize three of our students, baseball players, student athletes, that have earned excellent ACT scores and, on top of that, maintained high GPAs. These three student athletes that we have, we have two of them here tonight. One is actually in North Carolina playing baseball, but the first one is Blake Athousias. The second is Aidan McFarlane. Allstate, the third is actually Hunter Poole, and he is in North Carolina tonight playing ball. He's doing some, he's there, obviously signed to go play some baseball and is already getting a start this summer. What I want to say is that all Allstate activities are recognized by the Coaches Association. And what happens is coaches put names in for GPAs, ACT scores, and then they take that batch from all across the state and they select those. So these three individuals are the epitome of what we want, not only athletes, but student athletes and getting the job done in the classroom. We also like to recognize our Allstate track student athletes. If you guys can kind of just come up, we'll line you up. A lot of them are coming out of football practice tonight and or in the weight room or done lifting, so they're probably a little stinky tonight. They're coming up the stairs right now. Okay, we got a couple coming up. They're fast, so they should be here quick. And I'll just go with who I see currently. I'd like to start with Jarrett Hyatt. Jarrett Hyatt placed eighth in the state this year in the high jump and has done a tremendous job, so congratulations, Jarrett. In addition, I want to recognize the seventh-place four-by-two relay of Michael Lewis, Isaac Malley, A.J. Martin, and Chase Plummer Thomas. And then not here to, right now, is Justin Knight. He placed sixth in the state long jump this year. And actually, here he comes.
I love it.
Stand up, Coach Ace, come on. Congratulations, guys.
I know the feeling, Mr. Ace.
Have Coach Rollings take a knee. Maybe if they carry Coach Rollings, they could hold him up.
Good job, guys.
Congratulations again, guys. Staff recognition, Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it is my honor tonight to represent Pam Pierce as this month's Transportation Employee of the Month. Pam has been with our district for the past four years. If you've ever had the opportunity to spend any time with her, you will just feel positive energy beaming off of her. She is on the transportation climate team, and she, we got the opportunity to get to know Pam a little bit better when she was placed on light duty with Mrs. Ward down in her office, and we loved having her, and she did an exceptional job. She always has a smile on her face, and we appreciate everything that she does. So Pam, congratulations, and thank you.
Congratulations again, Pam. Community recognition, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor to recognize Chamber of Commerce, and Cecilia Murray is here tonight on Chamber's behalf. We would like to recognize Chamber for being such an outstanding partner with the district. Not only are they open to any wild career embedded opportunities we have, but each year, they present to our eighth graders on the Choices Program, and they cover college and career readiness, the impact of individual choices, future relationships, financial insight, and then also goal setting, and we just value and appreciate their partnership so much. So it's my honor to recognize Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Rotary Club of Plaski County for their partnership in this program, because we wouldn't be able to do it without them, along with all of our Chamber members, businesses, and presenters that help us do this every year, so thank you.
Moving to discussion items, Waynesville Middle School construction update, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Waynesville Constable Maintenance Staff have completed the floors and continue to move and put together the furniture and equipment. The administration is looking for mid-July for the rooms all to be completed and ready to receive staff and students. And upcoming dates will be coming for an open house to walk the middle school.
Spring sports program, Mr. Ace.
Okay, today we'll just, we'll go through academics, tiger performance training, competitive success for the spring, and then just what's coming up on season 21-22. Academically, if you take a look, you can see that our team GPAs for the spring were an overall average of a 3.2. And then for the year, that average across the board for all sports for the 2021 school year was 3.26, which is an increase from last year, actually, so we're continuing to get better and improve. Just real quick, spring academic all-conference awards, we had 35 all-conference nominees and 25 honorable mentions within spring sports. Three of those, obviously, Allstate that we recognized tonight at the board meeting, but that all-conference is a 3.75 GPA or higher, and then the honorable mention is the 3.5 to 3.74 GPA. This is just the breakdown of athletics and what teams during the spring had what as far as academic all-conference. Tiger Performance Training, currently, we have three summer sessions that are going on, one at 6:30 a.m., 8:00 a.m., and 5:30 p.m. Ironically, the 6:30 a.m. seems to be the highest attendance, so kids are not afraid to get up in the morning. Signups are located on our district webpage. That is the, that is the link right there that goes directly to our signups. In addition to that, coaches are pushing them out through remind, and of course, we have it on our social media sites here within the athletic department as well. Our average daily attendance in those sessions currently is about 150 student athletes. That's including the 45 that we're seeing in class during summer school right now. So we're averaging about 150 kids. I expect that to pick up this week. Football's kind of kicked off and going strong starting today, so. Our July dates will be Monday through Thursday, starting July 12th and ending July 29th, prior to our dead week. We will again have two morning sessions and a PM session at the same time. And then just to remind our student athletes that there is a 70% expectation for them to be in attendance. Breaking down our competitive success, we have our athletic individual awards. We had 22 individuals within spring sports that were named to all-conference, 38 that were named to all-district, 18 that were all-regional or sectional, depending on the sport, and six that were Allstate that we had recognized tonight. These are the spring sports conference standings. You can see that for the spring, we finished seventh out of the, actually, 11 schools now, including Bolivar. We had our boys' track team, who was district and sectional, track and field champions. A number of them were here tonight being recognized. And again, Justin Knight finished sixth place, Jarrett Hyatt eighth place in the high jump. And then we had our four-by-200-meter relay finish seventh in the state. In addition to that, we had actually seven student athletes that have signed the spring season, and that made a total of 16 total student athletes for the year that have signed to go on and receiving some type of academic aid for athletics. A lot of them academically as well. We have seven moving on. Brian O'Barr will be going to Central Missouri University. Keishon Smith will be attending Missouri Southern State University for track and field. Jordan Harpel will be going to Bonn University to play volleyball. L.J. Beam will be going to Friends University in Iowa to play football. Cindy Kudiman is going to Cloud County Community College for volleyball. Martin Magrano headed to John Moores University in UK to participate in soccer, and then Joey Lenkis will be going to Victor Community College in California to play football. Just now, as we got, as we're heading through the summer, our student athletes and coaches have contacted over 450 elementary kids during summer camp, so we've had plus 450 now kids that we've seen through our elementary camp programs. Our remaining programs are tennis, which will be June 28th and July 1st. Those signups are currently open, and registration is open online on our webpage. And then soccer, for boys and girls both, will be opening, will be July 26th through 30th, that's four days, and those registrations will be opening after this week for the summer. In addition, we will have our middle school football camp, July 26th through 29th, and all those registrations are on the link below. Just as we head into next season, just want to remind parents and everyone that physicality is needed for the 2022, 21-22 school year, and that needs to be dated prior to February 1 of 2021. Our first day of practices are August 9th for the high school and August 16th for the middle school for fall sports. We are offering, Mercy is again offering some free physicals, August 3rd through 5th, from 5:00 to 6:30, and then we'll actually be partnering with the Waynesville School-based Health Clinic and COMC here August 10th and 11th to do physicals as well by appointment. Again, remaining summer camps, we already discussed, student athlete parent meeting will be up and available starting August. Anyone who is entering 7th grade, 9th grade, or is new to the district will need to complete that, and that will be done online. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ace. End-of-year performance data, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Tonight, I am going to share our end-of-year performance data. This data is monitored throughout the year within the classroom and within grade-level collaborative teams and is used to guide instructional planning and intervention. Our building steering teams review data as part of the PLC process to identify trends and focus areas across the buildings. At the district level, the district leadership team reviews data throughout the year to identify areas in need of additional support. Tonight, I will be discussing district writing prompt, our priority standards data, as well as our end-of-year STAR assessments. The district writing prompt is utilized across the grade level four times per year to measure student progress in writing towards mastery of end-of-year writing standards. The writing prompt presents the students with unfamiliar texts, which they then respond to. This is similar to what they would see on a state assessment or in real life, where we are teaching students to read information they come in contact with and then respond to it. The writing prompt is assessed in three areas. Area one is question, and this assesses students' ability to develop an idea that addresses the topic of the prompt. In the area of question, 74.7% of students scored proficient, which is similar to where we scored in May of 2019. We did give the prompt in 2020. Students did take that from home, and so we did not give it at all grade levels, so I'll be doing comparisons mainly to our 2019 data this evening. Area two of the writing prompt is text evidence. This assesses the student's ability to respond to the prompt using specific and relevant text-based details. 71.2% of students were proficient in this area on the final prompt. This has been an area of growth for us over the past several years. Area three looks at students' use of grade-level appropriate writing conventions. District-wide, 74.2% of students were proficient on the final prompt. This has also been an area of focus and growth over the last several years. The standards proficiency slides that you'll be seeing next reflect student proficiency on district priority standards as measured by district-created standards-aligned assessments. 2020 data is included, however, it should be noted that students completed those assessments at home last spring due to the COVID closure, and once again, we'll be doing comparisons to mainly the 2019 data. This year's standards proficiency for pre-K through 6 in the area of ELA was 75.7%, which was up slightly from where we were in 2019. In math, our standards proficiency for grades pre-K through 6 was 78.8%. 6th grade showed the largest gain over previous years. At the middle school level, standards proficiency ended overall at 69.9%. Science 8 showed the strongest gain over previous years. And at the high school level, proficiency was at 72.2% at the end of the year, which was up slightly from last year and on par with where students were at the end of 2019. ELA 9, Science 9, and World History showed the strongest gains. Next, we'll be looking at our STAR assessments. The STAR Early Literacy Assessment is utilized to assess the early literacy skills of our kindergarten students. Kindergarten students did not take this test last spring. Overall, 73% of our kindergarten students ended the year on level, with East Freedom, Partridge, and Wood showing growth over their 2019 level. This slide depicts scale score growth this year on the STAR Early Literacy Assessment, so really looking at where our schools started the year and where they ended the year. And you can see, while they all started in different places and they might have ended in different places, they showed very similar growth rates across the buildings. As we look at our STAR reading and math slides, please note, first and second grade did not participate in STAR assessments at the end of last year, and grades 3 through 10 took them from home, so once again, that 2020 data is on here as more of a reference. In STAR reading, the overall end-of-year data reflects 58% of students as meeting the on-level benchmark, with our on-level rates ranging from 40 to 69%. In grades 1 through 5, the end-of-year average grade-level equivalency met or exceeded the actual grade level, and 7th grade showed the most growth over their 2019 scores. Grades 3 through 5 exceeded the on-grade-level scale score cut mark. On this slide and upcoming slides, you will see several data points. The blue line is the average scale score at the beginning of the year, the orange line is the average scale score at the end of the year, and the gray line shows the amount of growth from beginning to end of year. The chart to the right shows the average scale score to be considered on level, and then there's also a small box at the bottom that shows the expected amount of growth for that grade level from beginning to end of year. Overall, our average first-grade scale score was 148, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 105 by 43 points. East Freedom, Partridge, and Thayer exceeded the spring benchmark cut score. The average scale score grew 84 points from beginning of the year to the end of the year, with, again, that expected growth to be 34 points. So all of our buildings exceeded the expected growth. The end-of-year second-grade average scale score was 323, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 279 by 87 points. East Partridge, Thayer, and Wood exceeded the spring benchmark, and all buildings exceeded the expected growth target of 97 points. The end-of-year third-grade average scale score was 435, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 392 by 43 points. which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 392 by 43 points. East Partridge, Thayer, and Wood exceeded the spring benchmark, and all buildings exceeded the expected growth of 69 points. The end of year 4th grade average scale score was 524, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 479 by 45 points. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark cut score, and the average scale score grew 129 points from beginning of the year to end of the year, and all buildings exceeded the expected growth target of 55 points. The end of year 5th grade average scale score was 599, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 584. The average scale score grew by 86 points from beginning of the year to the end of the year, and all buildings exceeded the growth target of 59 points. When looking at grades 6 through 10, 8th grade exceeded beginning to end of year growth expectations. If you were to look on this slide, it would appear that 10th grade went backwards. We really do not believe that is accurate. We will be working with our high school next year to help make these end of year assessments more meaningful for our students so that when we take, when they take them, we can get a more accurate reflection of where their performance is. We know at the end of the year, they're, they have a lot of testing going on, so we'll work on some goals for them for next year. In STAR math, the overall end of year data reflects 69% of students as meeting the on-level benchmark, with on-level rates ranging from 54 to 79%. In all grade levels, the end of year grade level equivalency met or exceeded the student's actual grade level. Grades 1 through 6 exceeded the on-grade level scale score cut mark. And the end of year 1st grade average scale score was 417, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 357 by 60 points. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and all exceeded the growth expectation, which was 117 points. For 2nd grade, the average scale score was 520, which exceeded the benchmark cut score of 476. All buildings exceeded the benchmark, and our average scale score grew by 117 points, which exceeded the growth expectation of 80 points. In 3rd grade, the average scale score was 610, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 565 by 45 points. All buildings exceeded the benchmark, and our average scale score grew 112 points, with the expected growth rate being 83 points. The end of year 4th grade average scale score was 675, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 627 by 48 points. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark. The average scale score grew 95 points and exceeded the growth target of 60 points. In 5th grade, our average scale score was 739, which exceeded the benchmark cut score of 684. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark and also exceeded growth expectations. In grades 6 through 8, 6th grade exceeded the average scale score benchmark cut score, and 6th and 7th grade exceeded growth expectations. As we finalize our planning for the upcoming 2021, 2022 school year, we will use this data as part of that planning process. Our curriculum teams will use this, our administrative teams, our building level teams to help with their planning and to guide the instructional process. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you.
Guidance report, Mrs. Long.
Good evening. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide an update on our school counseling program. This is just our current staffing of counselors throughout the district. There has not been any changes in this in the past several years. That gives you an idea of where the counselors are allocated throughout the district. One thing that the counselors, really proud of their work for this past year, was working on the back-to-school social-emotional learning lessons that they helped to develop along with classroom teachers. This was part of the return to learning plan that was put in place, and this provided targeted lessons for all students. This is K through 12 during the first 10 days of school when we returned last fall. It integrated social-emotional learning with the teaching of the PBIS expectations, along with some hygiene lessons as well during, again, that first 10 days of school when students returned in person to the classroom this fall. All the lessons and activities that they implemented were trauma-informed. And then in addition to that, we did some work with the counselors on updating our referral system and the process to make sure that everyone knew how that would work for those students that were identified as needing additional support when they returned to school. They did some really great work there. Another highlight of their curriculum is their college and career readiness. About two years ago, I started working with Mr. Henson on the 6th through 12 lessons, our secondary college and career readiness lessons. We met with a team of teachers from the 6th grade center throughout the Career Center, high school, middle school as well. And the first thing we did was develop common expectations for college and career documents, such as a resume, a cover letter. If it was being taught somewhere in the district, we'd like for it to all look the same, because many classes can teach the same thing. And it was a great conversation in which many of us were updated in, you know, what people are looking for now in resumes and cover letters. So that was, we came up with some common expectations and templates that were then taught in the classroom. This is a combination. There's a whole timeline and schedule for 6th through 12 of when counselor-led lessons are presented to students, as well as classroom connections, which means, for example, in their English classrooms, they're writing these documents for a grade in the class, or they are writing a research paper or a writing prompt related to careers and their future and their interests. So trying to make those connections across the curriculum there as well. And they did some great work with that. This year, we were able to see some really good benefits of that for our students. We also have worked to bring in, we've been using Missouri Connections, which is a great, phenomenal, phenomenal website that's available in Missouri to all Missouri schools for years. But we've been working to combine that work that's available out there and all those programs with Missouri Connections, along with our student scheduling program. Every student completes an individual career and academic plan, which is called an ICAP. It's a four, a five-year plan, actually, is what it is. And so basically, Missouri Connection starts them in the 6th grade by taking some surveys to identify where their interests, where their strengths are. And then the lessons just keep growing as they get older, and 7th, and 8th, and 9th, and all up through senior year, where they end up that senior year, you know, researching colleges, researching careers, income, all the realities of life after graduation through Missouri Connections. So we're really working to make that really, you know, seamless with the scheduling program as well, so that students are sitting in the classes to prepare them for those future plans that they're making. Another college and career readiness program that they've worked on this year is creating an online and virtual career fair, which has really been fun to get a good start. And I'm so excited to see how it turns out, because through a couple of things, through offering the opportunity for people to speak about their career virtually, one, we've gotten people that aren't in our area able to speak with our kids about careers that aren't always available in our area. It also has freed up some of our community people who maybe had to go, in the past have been so gracious to come and present for hours upon end during their workday to our students. But this has been a really fun thing to start. And so we're, you know, a great resource too, for kids to be able just to go back even at different times, you know, to pull them in one-on-one and do some, just to watch some different people talk about their careers. So we're going to continue working on that throughout the next school year as well. Teen safety, this is the first school year that the new state law went into place that requires developmentally appropriate sexual abuse training for students in grades 6 through 12. We're really excited to get to partner with Kids Harbor on these presentations. They have a phenomenal program called Safety Matters, and they were gracious enough to partner with us and come and present to our students. And what was really exciting was once these lessons started being, they were really great engaging lessons with the students. And not only did they cover the material needed to teach students what's appropriate about sexual abuse, but they also really reemphasized children, you know, the response to bullying, cyberbullying, child abuse, and digital dangers out there. So it was a great reinforcement of other skills that we like to cover as well. That was a valuable partnership, and we really appreciate, that's a picture of our six, several of our 6th through 12th grade counselors and those people from Kids Harbor that helped us with that. In addition to those programs, those are just a few that I chose to highlight. Obviously, our counselors provide support in a lot of additional areas, some of which I've listed here. And then, as we move into the next school year, our focus areas are counselor collaboration. We have met as a council, district counselor group for years, but we're really looking at focusing that collaboration next year on some, you know, grade level collaboration between transitioning grade level collaborations and some focused topic collaboration as well. College and career readiness, we want to really keep building on, reflecting on that work that we've done with college and career readiness. As I mentioned, the virtual videos, that ICAP and enrollment tie-in, make sure that that continues to strengthen in that process. Diversity training for our counselors was an area in which they requested some additional support for the upcoming school year, and increasing our social-emotional supports for students. Specifically, Tier 1, which is, those are supports that every student gets in every classroom. So that's, those are our focus areas for the next school year. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Long, just a comment. I had an opportunity to attend your social emotional support night, virtual presentation, and I found it very useful as a parent, and I hope that other parents take advantage of that as well. It was very enlightening.
Thank you.
On how to help our kids deal with this pandemic.
Yeah, thank you. That was really fun to prepare and provide some resources. And we'll get it out there on the save presentation on the website and hopefully direct some more people back to it, because, yeah, there were some good resources there. Thank you, appreciate that.
Mrs. Long, in regard to the college and career readiness, are there lessons incorporated on how to teach kids how to navigate the scholarship application process and college application process as well?
There are. That's obviously in the high school lessons, that's covered pretty intensely. Also, have been working with getting a little bit more time with them during the school day to do that and to lead them through that process as well. And some, some work with some local application streamlining as well. So we're, I know that's something that, you know, we always want to provide extra support for them, but absolutely.
Ms. Long, with the pandemic going on, has there been an increase in referrals as far as the students are concerned?
As far as to students, they haven't noted an increase in numbers of referrals, you know. They did a great job, I think, because a lot, individual, you know, numbers didn't rise necessarily this past year. Did a great job of, a lot of, a lot of our students were in the same boat, so they were coming back with the same problems. So I noticed a lot more of the counselors going and doing classroom lessons on specific topics, because it wasn't just one or two students in the classroom that needed the help. It was the whole class that could use, you know, a little bit of support there. And they also, I did see an increase in small group work this year, which was really, you know, I think, great. I noted that at many buildings, up through several of the secondary buildings as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mrs. Long.
Thank you.
Job descriptions, first reading, Mrs. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached proposed job descriptions refer your review as a first reading. 2.21.3 Coordinator of Alternative Education/Transitional Living. 4.6.4 Transportation Driver/Transportation Driver Trainer/Driver/Dispatch. 4.7.1A Transportation Secretary A. 4.7.1B Transportation Secretary B. 4.7.2 Routing Specialist. Administration will request approval at the regular July meeting, and my office would be happy to answer any questions between now and then.
Comments or questions? MSBA Policy and Procedure Update, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all can see, there are several policies, procedures, and even some forms that we do have in for this month. So just as a refresher on where this comes from and how this comes about. You know, first and foremost, as you all usually approve every year, usually mid-spring, we use the Missouri School Boards Association Policy Service. That's where it originates from. Those policies, we have foundational documents that set up board governance, but typically, they're going to be revised or created based on court rulings or statute, statutory changes at the legislative level. Also, as a reminder, they're sent to the District Tabs Committee, which is teachers, administrators, board members, and other staff members that review those first. They are then sent to you with any commentary made in that. You have them, have an entire month to review them, because there are a bunch of them that MSBA sent out this past time around, and quite a few forums that go along with illegal discrimination, harassment, and retaliation in this particular set. So you do have that month to review those, those are posted during that month. So you have a first reading, and then we come back for the second reading, which is the final approval. And feel free to ask any questions that you may have or any feedback that you have on those when they're posted.
FY22 Food Service Price Setting, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. The SSO, the Seamless Summer Option, is what we'll be transitioning to this program from the SFSP. It's a summer food service program. This will allow us to continue to offer breakfast and lunch for free. We'll start this program July 1st. We're currently approved through that through September 30th. We will have to reapply to continue to use SSO after September 30th for the remainder of the school year. As you see attached there, if we were not to have free breakfast and lunch, breakfast prices would be $1.45 for the Thayer and High School students. The reduced price would be 30 cents. Lunch's full price would be K8, through K8, would be $2.10. The full price for 9th through 12 would be $2.30, with a reduced price of 40 cents.
Any comment or question on that? All right, we'll move into action item. Textbook Proposals, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration requests approval of the elementary music and the high school, family, and consumer science textbooks as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve Action Item A, Textbook Proposals?
Motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Hearn makes the motion. Mr. Rouse, second. All in favor, show hands. Six on motion carries. FY21 Budget Revision, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Get a double dose of me tonight. The first item here will be covering the end of year for FY21, and then we'll be going into preliminary FY22 after that. So jump into FY21 here, just to kind of, the reporting timeline of the budget. So June 30th is the close of the fiscal year. So coming this up, this upcoming June 30th will close out FY21. And then August 15th is the ASBR deadline for the prior year. And then December 31st of the prior year is the audit deadline for DESI. The prior year ASBR review is done at the mid-year Board of Education Retreat. Kind of a revenue update for FY21, now that we're kind of close to the end of the year here. So initially, whenever COVID hit and the state's revenues were down, we were projecting to be at approximately 94.2% of the expected revenues, and then higher than, higher than expected Prop C revenues at the state level. And then also stimulus injections helped to rebound by FY21. So we actually ended up about on par where we thought we would have been at the beginning of FY21. But a lot of that had to do with the stimulus money that came through. So then, also kind of an update on the stimulus money here. So this is money that we received in FY21 from a stimulus standpoint. So we worked with the Plasky County, which I have to give a shout out to them, because they were great in working with this, and the money that they had to distribute. And so we had approximately $900,000 through the COVID reimbursement through Plasky County that was used to purchase a lot of our PPE equipment and cleaning supplies and things of that nature. So that was a big help. We got a transportation supplement in the amount of $93,485. And then ESER 1, which was the first round of CARES money that came through. In FY21, our portion of that was $156,426. And then ESER 2, we received about $2.6 million from that revenue source. FY21 Expense Update. We saved a little bit of money this year due to the Personnel Department. We work closely with them, and due to some, some key personnel movements that we made throughout the year, some shifting around, some, you know, through attrition. some shifting around, some, you know, through attrition, we were able to save approximately five hundred thousand dollars throughout, throughout the course of the year. We also, I worked closely with Mr. Henson's department. We got together and we were able to repurpose some devices and we surplus a lot of our devices. And we was able to, we was able to save about three hundred thousand dollars this year by doing that. Supply expenses this year, I just wanted to point out, they were, you'll be, may see in some, if some of your review through the budget, it'll look like supply expenses were kind of, there was kind of the balloon effect this year. And that was mainly to all the additional PPE and then all the cleaning supplies and extra custodial work that we had to do there as well, so. And then if there's any questions on the FY twenty-one, I'll entertain that now. Otherwise, we'll be looking for a motion to enact revenue expenditures to actual year account totals and necessary transfers to close the current fiscal year.
Any more comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the budget revision?
I'll make that motion.
Pondrey makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Quinn, second. All in favor, show of hands. Six oh motion carries. FY twenty-two, Mr. Harrison.
All right, thank you. Now on to the next year. So for FY twenty-two, our ongoing budgetary goals, you know, we, we always want to support the district's vision and mission. That goes a lot back to CSIP and taking care of that as well. Maintaining competitive salary schedule, maintain quality employee benefit package, plan for the future with consideration of student needs and student population in mind. And then, and then to address current facility needs. And then also the board, you know, throughout this COVID crisis has kind of identified some focus areas of building our reserve balance and then, you know, kind of taking care of our people in the district. So those are our budget development goals that we keep in mind as we go through this process. And the process is first, we start working with Operational Services and Personnel Department. We work together. We do salary and benefit projections, which is the lion's share of our budget each year. So we go through real closely through all, every employee and work to, to get their salary and benefits budgeted. And then that helps us to build that portion of the budget. We work together with the departments and the buildings to, to get their budgets in place. We, I work closely with Dr. Cobb on getting a capital projects budget in place. And then that's, and then that becomes a work of the bookkeeper at that point to begin putting together the, the budget book. And, and then we work on the presentation together. And then so the final thing remaining is the, the June budget approval that we'll be looking for a motion for tonight. FY twenty-two Projected Budget Summary. From an operational standpoint, the teachers and incidentals funds over there. We always roll everything into incidentals. We close out the year. So just kind of a overall view of that. Well, starting the year with, we're projecting to start the year with about twenty point two million dollars. From an operational standpoint, looking to spend forty-two plus thirty-one there. And at the end, the expenditures we're looking to, to, to spend this year, forty-one plus thirty-two. Overall, whenever you put all that together, our ending year balance for FY twenty-two, we're projecting to be about twenty point seven million dollars, which is about five hundred thousand dollars in the black from an operational standpoint. If you look over on the capital side for the capital expenditures, which I'll, I'll get deeper into these as we go through, through the presentation here. But just to kind of give you a summary there, we're, we're projecting to start on the capital side with about twenty-six point four million dollars. And then to end with about sixteen point six. And so we have a fairly large list of capital projects that we're looking to, to take care of this year. And then just another note here, the five point seven nine right there, the seven nine eight. We always budget on the capital side very, very conservatively from the revenue standpoint. That's where a lot of our B two heavily impacted money comes into. And there's a lot of variables in that equation, so we always budget very conservatively. I would anticipate that number to be much higher on the revenue side at the end of the year. But we just always budget conservatively over there just to be careful. So overall, over there on the total column, we're looking at starting the year with about forty-six point seven million dollars. Estimated receipts of about right at eighty million. Estimated expenditures of around eighty-nine point one. And then the balance at the end of the year projected to be around thirty-seven point four million. FY twenty-two Budget Concerns. Right now, the state revenues were projecting to be relatively flat for the year. And that's got a lot to do with the stimulus money that's been injected in. But we're, you know, but FY twenty-three and beyond is kind of where the concern is. How fast will the state economy rebound? And when the stimulus money is gone, you know, what are we going to see from there and beyond? So that's kind of the, the unknowns for now on the federal side of things. In FY twenty-two, so with the payments we receive from, from Impact Aid this upcoming year, we should regain B two eligibility. However, FY twenty-three and beyond becomes more challenging with our current two point, our two ninety-five tax levy. And I'll get more into that in this presentation as well. Some highlights from a revenue standpoint. Local tax revenues are projected to increase this year due to an increase in assessed valuation of Plasky County residential properties. We've had a big boom throughout the entire state really in residential. And so that has caused an increase in, in assessed valuation. So those, those revenues are projected to go up by around five to six percent. Prop C, which is a statewide tax that they, that they funnel through the, the local revenues, but it comes from the state. That's, that's projected increase as well. And then I don't know if any of you guys have tried to buy a camper or a boat lately, but they're nowhere to be found. Everybody's spending money. So we're, we're projected to go up a little bit from Prop C standpoint as well. And then our, our preliminary ESER three allocation is around five point eight million dollars. And of that, we're, we're going to be required to use twenty percent to basically bridge the learning gap to kind of help catch students up from the, from the things that we've had to go through with virtual learning and different things like that with COVID. So out of the five point eight million dollars, we're going to be required to spend twenty percent of that on bridging the learning gap. Federal revenues are conservatively budgeted. This is, you know, I just want to kind of strengthen my point that I pointed out earlier is that Impact Aid, we always budget that very conservatively. And there's a lot of things like the, the lot adjustments they can make and other things that can, can affect that revenue source. Quick breakdown of the revenues. Waynesville is definitely a unicorn from this aspect because of our federal, our federal revenues we get there. That is due to the Impact Aid money. Our state is actually our largest source of revenue. But we're definitely unique in the fact that we get those large portions of federal money. And then our property tax, our local tax generates about eleven, a little over eleven percent of our total budget. And then Prop C generates about seven percent of it. And then local slash other is about four point four seven percent. And then there's another other there that is things like tuition that's paid to us and some of the smaller things like that. Federal revenues are projected to go up. And this is mainly due to whenever the, whenever they kicked in and start paying this money for the, for the free lunches, they changed, that's all done. That money is, has, since they changed the program and made those lunches free, that revenue comes in from the federal standpoint. And so that's why we're projecting that to be higher this year, mainly is that, is what that's for. Our state revenues were, were projected to be, as I mentioned earlier, fairly flat. So it's, it's going to be really similar to, to what we've seen this year. That's what we're projecting. Our county revenues here are fair, I mean, it looks like there's a big jump there, but if you look, it's fairly flat. Six hundred seventy thousand going down to six hundred forty-five thousand. Those, those, that jump there between eighteen and nineteen, nineteen, twenty has to do with the change that they made at the county level due to federal force money coming into the district. Our local revenues, as I mentioned, the, our local taxes are projected to go up a little bit. And then also our Prop C is projected to go up. If you look at the total, it's a little bit misleading because it looks like it's going down from previous years, which it is. But that mainly has to do with the, the fact that parents, and we anticipate lunch, our meals to be free this year. So instead of the parents having to pay for the meals, we would normally revenue that, those funds in through this local revenue source. But that is all going to be channeled through that in the, in, through that free program at the federal level this year. So that's why that looks like it's going down there a little bit. Local revenues and Prop C, we actually anticipate to be up a little bit. Just quite, a reminder here of kind of the, the, the value you get here at the Waynesville School District. We have a great bang for your buck here. The Waynesville, our six school district operates with a tax rate of two dollars and ninety-five cents. And then if you look at that chart there, out of all districts in the state of Missouri, which there is five hundred and seventeen total districts, four hundred and twenty-six districts, which is eighty-two percent, have a higher tax rate than the Waynesville School District does. So just a great value that we get here. And then, you know, a lot of that has to do with the B two money that we, that we get. And that B two money is dependent upon this tax levy. We have to compare ourselves with, with comparable groups. And right now, we are on a very razor thin margin in being within that. So that's something that we have to keep in mind. At that two ninety-five tax levy there, we're, we're riding the fence of, of maintaining our B two eligibility. Other revenues, this has gone down a little bit. In past years, we've, we build houses and things of that nature where through the Career Center Department. And, you know, typically when we sell the house, we don't, we, we usually don't actually make any money off of, you know, building and selling the house. But we do draw, the revenue comes in through this source here. And so we don't have any building projects or anything of that nature coming through this. So that's why that one is projected to be less this year. Some highlights for FY twenty-two. The budget includes fourth year expenditures associated with Prop One. So that was the, the tax levy increase that we passed back in two thousand seventeen. And out of that, it generates about an additional six hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And we've always spent that on safety and technology. Approximately two hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred goes to safety in the form of SROs, surveillance video updates, building hardware and access upgrades. And then on the technology side, about three hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred. And we've mainly used that to get our one-to-one initiative and get advice in every student's hand. The FY twenty-two budget includes, includes increases to the district's salary and benefit package. So from a salary and benefit standpoint, we're looking at this year of doing a, a two percent increase on the, the base salary for certified. Multiplier increases on the three columns for MS plus sixteen, MS plus twenty-four and Specialist Doctorates column. And then we've also increased the SOS hourly rate to thirty-seven fifty. And then we increased the, the classified base salary figure by one point five percent. And then as well on the, we, for the one through six year bus aids and activity trips hourly rate, we raised those to twelve dollars an hour in preparation for the minimum wage increases that are coming down the pike. And then we've also, the, the district has, has realized an increase of approximately four percent on our insurance package for the upcoming year. On a capital project side, we're anticipating spending about fifteen point six million dollars this year. And then these expenditures are inclusive of, but not limited to the following. These are just the, the big ticket items that I wanted to point out here. So Parker Fine Arts and the Early Childhood Renovation, our Phase Two of our transportation project, the Freedom, Freedom of Shelter, metal storage building, HVAC upgrades, and Easton Wood Roof Repairs. So those are just the, the hot, the top spending items that we'll be spending money on from a capital project standpoint. Quick breakdown of our operating expenditures. The lion's share, like as, as I mentioned earlier, the lion's share of our operating money is spent on salary and benefits. About sixty percent on salaries and then about seventeen percent on benefits for a total of about seventy-eight percent combined for salary and benefits. And then about thirteen percent is spent on purchase services. And then about nine percent is spent on supplies and utilities. Kind of wanted to show our salaries and benefits expenditures here from a historical standpoint. So we trend up a little bit each year. For FY, for the current year, for FY twenty-one, we're projected to spend around forty-two point three million on salaries and twelve point five on benefits. And then projected for the upcoming year with the, with all the increases that we, that we're looking to do, about forty-four point five on salaries and then about twelve point seven on benefits. Incidental expenditures have increased by, by a small amount here, up to about sixteen point three million dollars is what we have projected this year. Our transportation expenditures, that spike there in twenty-one, we were initially projecting having Phase Two done in, in previous year, but we ended up, because of elevated material cost and things of that nature, we pushed that project off. And, and we only, we anticipate having, I believe, around thirty to forty percent of that project done at the end of this fiscal year. So we'll have expenditures going into FY twenty-two as well as FY twenty-three to finish up the transportation project. So that volatility there between the two years is directly related to the, to the Phase Two project. Food services expenditures, fairly flat, nothing really to, to point out here. About three point seven million dollars projected for FY twenty-two. And then our capital project expenditures, the big jump there in twenty through twenty-one would be the, our middle school project. And then we have nothing really as large as the middle school project this year, but we do have several of the, you know, bigger ticket items like the Parker Fine Arts renovation, the transportation building as well that, that add up to the fifteen point five million dollars there. Our lease purchase agreements, we, we just refinanced the two thousand sixteen series. So we're, we lowered our payments on those. The orange represents there the two thousand twelve series. We'll be paying that off in FY twenty-two. So as you can see, our, in FY twenty-three, an ongoing, our lease purchase payments will be, will be significantly cheaper. Total district expenditures, we're going to, we're projecting to be at approximately eighteen, eighty-nine point one million dollars this year. So that, that's went down a little bit over the last couple of years. And then just some, kind of some key things to point out for FY twenty-two. You know, it's important for us to, to remember that the stimulus funds that we've gotten have definitely been crucial to our operations. It's been, you know, it's been a much needed thing. But it's also kind of created a steroid effect into our revenue, revenue streams. And so it's just important on those one-time sources of mon, of funds like that to, to, you know, spend those wisely and not get yourself in a situation where you're raising your operating expenses whenever that revenue is not going to continue from year to year. ESER three, the American Rescue Plan, it'll likely be our last round of stimulus. And then there's a lot of unknown after that. And so I think it would be wise as, you know, from a district standpoint, to, to set themselves up to be able to kind of weather the storm of the unknown of FY twenty-three and beyond. And then also I wanted to point out, operating reserves are crucial during times when there's extended periods of cash flow issues at the state and federal level. Last year was a perfect example. They extended the date for, the, the due date for taxes. And so the state had a big cash flow issue last year around this time. And we, it was important for us to have those operating reserves in place so we can dip into. The states, you know, they're telling you, your money's coming, just hold on. But, but they, they drastically reduced it at this time last year. So that's, that's an important time when you need to have your operating reserves in place. And if there's no, any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those. Otherwise, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the preliminary FY twenty-two budget.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the FY twenty-two budget?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Pondrey makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Ralph, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh motion carries. Thank you. Gateway Global Entry, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Gateway Global Entry to Executive Program provides training and internships to prepare students for careers in the field of geospatial technology. Administration requests approval of the Gateway Global Agreement and addition of the Gateway Global Entry to Executive Program to the Waynesville High School Course Description Book. If this program addition is approved, we would begin enrolling students for the spring semester of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Any comments or questions? Pretty excited about this. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Mr. Hearn makes a motion. Ralph, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, or six oh motion carries. Board meeting schedule, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have the board meeting scheduled for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year in front of you. Typically, meeting's going to be on the third Monday of each month. However, we do have a few things that come up throughout the year. You'll notice September- notice that September is actually the second Monday. That's due to the NAFIS Conference, National Association of Federally Impacted Schools that we go to. December thirteenth, that's, that's the second Monday due to holiday break. The eighteenth, due to the Martin Luther King Holiday. And the twenty-second, or the eighteenth of January and twenty-second of February, due to President's Day Holiday. And then that will be on a normal schedule. You know, in addition, the board does call special sessions to address various business needs throughout the year.
Have a motion to approve the board meeting schedule?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Rouse makes a motion, I have a second. Quinn makes a second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Parker Fine Arts Bid Approval, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the bid recommendations of Cahill Construction for the Parker Fine Arts Project in the base bid amount of three million, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Pond makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, show of hands. Six oh, motion carries. And the Freedom FEMA Shelter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve entry into an Architect Engineer Service Agreement with Insight Design Studios for the Freedom Elementary FEMA Shelter.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Hearn makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Darian, second. All in favor, show of hands. Six oh, motion carries. We've already been to close, so I do have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'll make that a motion to adjourn.
Quinn makes a motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Rouse, second. All in favor, show of hands. We are adjourned. Thank you.